We have an ordinance that's in front of us. It has to do with discharging firearms in the township. I have the latest draft and there are some, I have some problems and questions about it. Bill, I think you have some questions and if anybody else has some at your hand will be sufficient. Bob, you have your hand up first.
What did you do about the 100, was it 100 yards from the property line?
I'll bring that up.
Because I have five and a quarter acres and I'd had to go right down the middle.
No, we couldn't even do that, but go ahead.
I found two things on a quick internet search and a search of newspaper articles. So I wanted to submit copies for all three supervisors plus Lisa. One is on what's called the immunity statutes in Pennsylvania. It's under the Pennsylvania annotated statute Title 35, Sections 4501, 4502. But essentially it says that it grants immunity to shooting ranges if a noise ordinance or a nuisance ordinance is put in place that if they, that the shooting occurred before the ordinance was passed, that they have grandfathered into it.
Oh, okay.
If my reading is correct, I'm not saying I'm an attorney, but it might say that whatever you gentlemen are considering and Lisa, that if it won't be effective possibly against the existing problem, you might then have time to look at something because you can't stop it in the very short run. If that's a correct reading. The other is from a newspaper article from June in the daily local news about West Nanmoo, and I apologize for mispronouncing that township, but they tried to pass, they considered a noise ordinance for similar gunfire action and they turned it down and then articles written onto that effect. So I have to get four copies of that for the supervisors and just useful for your total consideration.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay. That's yours.
Thank you.
Are there any other people that wanted me to comment about the draft of the gun ordinance? We're not going to pass it, of course, tonight. It has not been advertised and I think there will be some revisions to it. But I would like to say some things about it. And it has to do with the proposed setbacks from the property lines. And it says that there has to be 150 yards from any occupying dwelling or 100 yards from any property line. Well, if you do the math on this, you'll find that a two acre lot is 88,000 square feet. If you take the square root of that, which you need to do to find the side limits, the square root of that is a little bit less than 300 feet. And that would mean that 300 feet, a person with a two acre lot, there's no room for him to fire. There is no room for anyone with a four acre lot. And you have to have an eight acre lot and you have to stand in the center of it to shoot and that would be okay according to this. But if you happen to be near a dwelling, then that you have to go to more than eight acres. So I think that needs to be addressed very clearly and very carefully. Those limits have to be expressed or accompanied.
I think the 150 from a dwelling comes from the state game law and the chief.
Yes. It makes no difference if it's 150 yards.
But that's for shooting deer and such, right?
That's while hunting.
Yeah, while hunting.
While in the practice of hunting is what it said.
Does that mean if I set up a firing range, I have to be 150 yards from my house?
Well, we don't know. That's the only measurement restriction we can find in any law that says anything about shooting.
It's very difficult then. I think before we pass this gun ordinance, we really have to look very carefully at what we can and cannot prohibit. Okay. Any other questions on it?
I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Yeah.
Preliminary, if I can find my notes here. I had, I had a number of concerns that came from, when I read it over at the, at the regular session, there's, it talks about firearms and it talks about guns. It doesn't draw a distinction between the two. I think that's an inartical problem. The update on the definition of firearms, I don't have a real problem with the one that was originally on it. An instrument used in the propulsion of shot shell bullet and/or projectile by the action of gunpowder exploded within it. I have no problem with that one. The new one that links into the Uniform Act, I do have a problem with if I can find reference to that. I don't see why we need to, we as a township, need to be linked into some other legislation that has nothing to do with what we're talking about except tangentially. So for instance, any pistol or revolver with a barrel length less than 15 inches, defining what a firearm is. Well, there probably aren't a lot of pistols or revolvers with a barrel length of longer than 15 inches, although that's a pretty long handgun, but there are some. But shotgun with a barrel length less than 18 inches? I think that, I mean, I have a shotgun at home that's black powder and it has more than an 18 inch double barrel. I don't know what the difference is between mine and one that is not in excess of 18 inches, so I don't know what the distinction means. And it goes on with any rifle with a, with a barrel length less than 16 inches is a firearm. Well, I have, I have a black powder rifle. I have two black powder rifles at this point. I sold one that was probably 36 inches long for the barrel itself. And the other two are certainly more than 16 inches and they're accurate to probably 400 yards. One of them was, is a piece that was used during the Civil War by sharpshooters who were snipers, ZWVI, and it's very, very accurate for great distances. The point is the distinctions that are made in this description, I don't find to be terribly relevant. I think the problem is shooting and the projectile can go a certain distance. And 150 yards is to keep it from going that greater distance, but certainly modern rifles are far more powerful and more accurate than even the ones I'm talking about. And mine are dangerous enough. So I have a problem with that distinction. I don't know why, I mean, the 150 yards, I'll go along with you as being a concern. I'm glad that, that a distinction was pulled off for defining shotgun separately. I think that no discharge between the hours of 7:30 and 6:30, 7:30 PM and 6:30 AM. I think that those that have suggested dusted on is probably much more realistic.
I agree with that.
And yet that's not picked up in the new revision.
Bob Adams said that you three need to decide if you want that in there or not.
Yes, we will decide.
The concerns about exemptions for the business and manufacturing bearing and dealing. Bullets don't care where they came from. I don't know why we should care where they came from. Same problems, I'm looking at the old 123.5B and I'm looking at D, indoor commercial shooting ranges. I don't know why we make a distinction for commercial or non-commercial. I don't see why we use the NRA standards as defined NRA standards. From the things that I've been told, the NRA has outstanding standards. That's today. And I have no idea what they'll be tomorrow or 10 years from now. I think that if the standards are good, let's just put the words in our legislation and in our zoning laws so that we don't have to go translate, well, this is what the NRA said then, not now or tomorrow. Let's just use the language. And then it goes further on, continuing with exemptions, any person over the age of 18. I'm not sure I know why the age of 18 is significant. Somebody who is younger than 18 can be careless just as easily as somebody who is over 18 can be careless and somebody who...
On 123.5, exemptions?
Yes.
Where are you reading?
I'm looking at G. It's G the one I'm looking at.
You're looking at the revised.
If I don't have a G in...
Oh, they've taken that one out.
Yes, you're looking at an older version.
Thank you. He apparently has taken out the language regarding firms, partnerships, corporation, other entities. So my content, my comments in that regard are not necessary. I was wondering how there had been a jail corporation.
Right, and I'd like to see if Scott or Jeff...
So I had a couple of thoughts here that I wanted to get on the table. Thank you for listening.
I have one more thing and I don't know that this is correct. On the revised sub-paragraph F under 123.5, which says use of firearms, I'm sorry, use of firearms or shotguns in defense of human life, is that the equivalent of standing your ground?
If it is, I'm going to be opposed to this. I certainly think that's inappropriate to reach that conclusion. I think for self-defense, it's a different animal, but standing your ground's a different animal.
I don't know the difference, but, okay.
In my mind, there's a difference.
Let them work out.
And the language doesn't, your question raises the issue and I think that's an important issue.
All right. Any other questions, observations, comments on...
I just wanted to say that, so you two agree with Mary Kay's comments, correct?
Who are you two?
Richard and... What are her comments again, please?
Her comment was that about the exemption for gun dealers. She said the same thing Scott said, that, you know, that shouldn't be in there. Then the other one is what is an adequate backstop? We still haven't resolved that.
Right.
So what I wanted to do is just send her comments and Scott's and Mike's and Bill's to Bob Adams.
Right. And, I mean, earlier, but maybe for everyone, there was some other comments you've gotten in writing, especially from some other people that might be useful to hear.
I know I already sent to him and got the responses and sent to all, everybody. The ones that they, from the initial ordinance that I sent out, is that what you're talking about?
No, from one of the other individuals.
Oh, yes, from Dr. Petersell, yes, I have them as well.
Just so that everyone can hear what their comments, because, yeah, I mean...
John?
Oh, sorry, excuse me.
I'd like to comment just on one thing Scott said.
Hold on, hold on, my...
I jumped ahead, sorry.
So I'm going to send those comments along with, I sent the supervisor, Dr. Petersell's comments. He is the neighbor who does some of the shooting out there. And he had, he would like the time to be that you're permitted from, you know, prohibited from dusting on. He would also, he also had an issue with the distance that's in the ordinance. And I sent this to all of you. So those were his two concerns with the ordinance. And then another resident, Ted Moxon, sent me a comment about the distance as well.
Good. John?
In the little reading I've done about this, I think Scott said the same thing, that the NRA standards are quite well respected.
That's what I'm told. I don't know that personally, but that's what I'm told.
I come to the same conclusion. And I believe you advocated putting those standards in the ordinance.
I was suggesting that if we're going to use it, don't reference it, but use the actual words.
Yeah. I don't know how extensive that is, but I'd be cautious on doing that. In our ordinances, particularly zoning and subdivision land development, we reference many things which are respected in our bodies. And, you know, from time to time, they will change things. It makes it much easier to manage everything. It's words like, it existed at the time, this ordinance, or may be amended, something like that. I would just look into that carefully. Otherwise, you'll get into a very voluminous ordinance, which is not generally what we want. You always have the option if you find that in the future NRA has strayed from acceptable standards to modify the ordinance, to set that aside and then develop your own or find some other body. The referencing is a valid approach in my opinion.
Okay, any more comments on the draft gun ordinance?
I have a comment. Just, this is in regard...
Introduce yourself, please.
Ellen Mateo. In regards to the distance, I'm in agreement with the 100 yards from the property line because, as Scott said, bullets today, guns today are very powerful and I don't think 150 yards is adequate enough, even with the, you know, the defined backstop. So I'm totally for that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I was looking at backstops. I just happened to be standing back here thinking about it. We need to come up with some kind of standard. Because when you go to a forensic crime lab and they want a test fire a gun, they shoot from here to the wall, where it goes into a device, through the funnel, then goes into water. Then I was in a residence's house in his basement demonstrating something. He fired a gun, he fired it into a two by, two square, it was steel, it had some kind of baffles in it. And that bullet just dropped when it got to the end of it. So I don't know how we're going to come up with what we're saying is the backstop.
I think they were mostly concerned with backstops outside.
I, I, okay, I understand, but suppose you took this backstop outside. How's it engineered, how are any of them engineered to what? I mean, is there standards for these? Is there an engineer that developed these? What are we going to say an adequate backstop is?
I can't answer that because I don't know that we have defined that yet.
Okay. I just want to make sure we define what the backstop is.
It's an open question and I think that has to be defined.
Okay.
I would assume that relates to the NRA standard.
Yeah, and I don't know what that is, but...
And I think we need to figure out how do we get it in front of us.
Ellen?
Well, why can't, you know, like, we go to the shooting range and ask them, like, we have a membership at a range and say, what's your standard? Is it NRA? Is it something they rule? You know, and maybe give them on that.
Certainly a good way to do it. Okay, thank you.
And the other thing I wanted to relay is Dr. Petersell did say he was working on getting a backstop made and he was paying quite a bit of money for it. I do not know what it is or where he's getting it made, but he did mention to me that he is in the process of that and is willing to put that up.
A similar dilemma, but it may offer a solution. People who have swimming pools have to have gates and locks. And the standard, I think, is that it's UL listed. In other words, a testing laboratory has said that this lock works. I don't know if these devices are subject to being tested by Universal Lab as part of the way they sell the product, but it's possible that if there is a manufactured device, not one, not like an earthen burn that's bulldozed up, but if there's a manufactured device, that it may have some kind of a certification on it and that that such a certification could be in a simplified way. In other words, it tested in it withheld whatever it does to stop whatever kind of bullets at whatever kind of range or whatever, whatever that is. You know, that that might be another way to go, some certification process that exists in whatever industry it is.
Our zoning officer would have to look into that.
Absolutely.
Right. Okay.
You can just look it up online. The NRA has guidelines for backstops.
Okay, all right, that's even better.
I'm chilling.
I knew who you were. My mistake. Okay, let's move on. The next issue on our agenda is the solar gates for the Land Trust of Southern Chester County has given us a request to have a solar gate installed at the Marshall Mill House.
And at Auburn Heights.
At Auburn Heights, yes. And it's been a problem of people coming in there after hours and so forth. And their request is for us to pay $10,000 for, for the gates and we need to talk about it. You and I, really, it's a decision up to us. And I don't know how you feel about it, so if you would say in open system what you feel about it, I'd all ears.
Sure. First, I'm going to ask a question. Chief, do I understand correctly that even without the chain or a gate there at the Marshall Mill House, with the posting that's currently in place, you can enforce the private property component of it and if somebody's there after dark, go in and do whatever it is you do?
That's correct.
And we're not talking about down at, where's the other place?
Auburn Heights.
Auburn Heights, that's right, because that's in Delaware. So that's not within our jurisdiction there. But you're able to enforce this, the private property standard as is, without any kind of gates there or any kind of impediments into the parking space?
Well, let me give you a little background on this.
Please.
I don't know how the gate issue came up, but that's something that came to the township in the past week or so. The gate is not going to solve what the issue is at Marshall Mill House. Looking that up just yesterday, I wanted to see if there was a permit for what's down there and what causes the problem. And there is. And the problem there is that picnic pavilion and where it's located. I never saw anybody there at that during the day, but 2:00 in the morning when I, yes, to fix a problem, I have. So there was the issue of, there was a chain. Chain acts as a barrier which communicates to somebody in Pennsylvania, you're not permitted. Then there was the issue of the chain, whether we're going to put the chain up, chain down, whatever. But there were no signs because it was communicated to me that the organization that controls that wanted people to enjoy nature. And when I said 2:00 in the morning, they said, you can enjoy nature at 2:00 in the morning. So this problem had developed as a result of that. But in looking at this and determining that picnic pavilion is only used at night for that kind of activity, I thought it was awful close to a residence. And researching the permit that was issued, there was one issue, it says that's supposed to be 350 feet from any structure. It's not, you know, it's not even 100. So the bigger concern than the solar gate at $10,000, I think that would be a waste of taxpayer's money, is what do we do about this picnic pavilion that is a non-conforming structure and was not installed according to the permit? Because that will eliminate the problem, but I haven't had a chance to talk to the zoning officer about it.
Okay, could we stop there? That's, that's a very relevant but separate issue. On our table, concerns a request to offer $10,000 as a payment for solar gates. So can we stick to that for just a moment? Okay. If you have anything more, express an opinion about the request for $10,000.
Well, the reason why I asked the chief about the enforcement issue is I don't think we gain anything by having a gate, a chain, or anything else, a cattle grate on the ground, anything. People are going to go across that if they want to go across that. They can go over it, under it, around it. They can take the chain down that's there and they could probably move the solar gate as well if they wanted to be destructive. So I don't know what we gain by spending $10,000 and creating a patent barrier when that barrier has no meaning. I mean, it's, the residents, I'm told, put it up in the evening and take it down in the morning when it's around. If one wanted to get in there at 2:00 in the morning, it'd be just about as easy, I should think, to be able to do that. So I think that probably the more effective solution from a long-term point of view is to, to address that pavilion.
Again, sir, I'm asking only for whether we are going to vote to provide $10,000 or not. It's a yes or no situation. And I realize everything that has been said, the chief, and what you've said, and I think I can predict your opinion, that we're not in favor of that.
At this point, without more explanation as to why this is somehow going to be a significant panacea, I'm not prepared to spend $10,000.
I move therefore that we deny the request.
We don't have to take, we don't have to take a vote. I just needed to know what you guys...
I will grow my motion. Thank you. And we then go on...
I withdraw my second.
You didn't hear it yet.
So it sounds like the supervisors in the Land Conservancy need to talk about the pavilion.
That's very true.
Tom has something.
Absolutely correct.
Well, I wanted to finish what I was saying. Since we're now on the pavilion. Three weeks ago, more or less, chief and I were down at Marshall Mill House looking at what the issues were and the chief sat standing in the parking lot. Look over there and tell me what you see. It was in the afternoon, it was light, visibility was fine, nothing but trees. It's a row of trees. You go through that row of trees, when you walk over the, the little bridge, and once you go through it, then you see the, the pavilion that, that the chief was talking about. So I think that, that he's right in analyzing the problem. And if that, if that pavilion were somewhere else, it wouldn't be so close. That seems to be the real issue for, for the neighbors, is that there's lots of activities that are going on that is a distraction right up against their bedroom window. So finding some solution that perhaps involves that pavilion and enforcement of, I'll stay with it for a second. I asked, I asked a neighbor about enforcing it and she said, if I have to call the state, please, if there's not, nothing else going on, then maybe they'll come around and check it at 2:00 in the morning. But if there's anything else going on, they're not going to be there or it's going to be a long time if they do. If I call Chief McCarthy, he'll be there. Well, he's at home in bed and somebody's going to call him. But nevertheless, there is, there is an enforcement issue from a practical perspective. Having said that, that's the way it is when it comes to law enforcement, I suppose, is enforcement, you've got to get somebody to call in and then you've got to have the time to get the person in there to investigate it. But it sounds like enforcing it is what needs to happen.
Well, let me say this, it's easy to continue to write speeding tickets day after day after day. After a while, you'll get a reputation out there and you can't speed in that area. That works. But to do this, these people have to put up with this noise at 2:00 in the morning. And every time she calls me, I don't have a problem with that, except we're not getting to the heart of the problem. The heart of the problem is posting, you say that no, not committed in there. And secondly, removing that because it shouldn't be there and that is the heart of the problem.
It also sets up a, a situation if, if the same people are going in there and getting harassed by the police. Forgive me for saying it that way. I don't mean it in a negative way. But if you're in there every night and you're dealing with the same group of kids, the kids know who's doing the calling. So what are the chances of them coming around and being louder or throwing stones or golly knows what? So I think that we don't protect our neighbor very effectively if we follow the pattern of what I'm talking about. So I agree with what you're saying is the concern.
I'd like some other people to make comments on this and a couple of hands were raised. Tom, would you?
Yeah. I've never had a sign here that says hours of operation from sunrise...
I've never had a sign here that says hours of operation from sunrise to sunset.
I think there is a sign there that says.
There is there now.
There is now, okay, but there hasn't been for years.
That's right. That's true. John?
I think I agree with Scudder's point that, you know, a solar fence, although I don't fully understand what a solar fence is. Well, but a fence can be overcome many ways. So I'm not sure the fence is a good idea. And I really do question maintenance issues with automatic systems.
I think we've pretty well resolved it, we're not gonna fund it. If they're gonna do it, that's another matter, and it may be out of our hands, but we're not funding it.
Well, Mr. Martin, my question was just, why would they come to us anyway?
Oh, they want money, that's all.
Well, they go to anybody for that, but why they pick on?
They like us, they think we've got unlimited funds, which we might not have. You have any questions?
Yeah, my name is Tony Hodgson, I'm the land manager for the land conservancy. First of all, the Marshall Bridge Preserve is in Pennsylvania, we're right on the border, just so you know that. Secondly, this issue was about a chain. The first we've heard of a pavilion issue is right now tonight.
Well, I have to disagree with you. Go ahead, please.
Okay, fair enough. Agree to disagree, but this is the first I've heard of a pavilion issue.
Oh, I'm sure, that's correct, okay.
As far as a solar powered gate, I think it's actually a very, very sensible compromise because it will allow, I'm opposed to gates and chains because they tell good people, do not enter. I don't care how many signs you put up, if you see a gate or you see a chain, you will not go in, okay? But I am opposed to putting a chain up there. The gate, I think, is a sensible compromise, but I do not, in my personal opinion, feel that anyone should have to fund $5,000 for one gate or $10,000 for two gates. I think it's a ridiculous amount of money for the township to spend on a gate.
Well, the land conservancy is proposing it.
Yes, we propose it as an alternative to the chain, because we do not agree with the chain.
They can put up a solar gate.
Pardon?
Let them put up a solar gate.
Well, this all came up because Scudder and Albert and Gwen and I were all having conversations back and forth trying to resolve this issue out there. So we were trying to come up with alternatives, and this was just a suggestion that came up as to an alternative to a chain. That's how it came up.
Unfortunately, $5,000 solar powered gate is just not something that we can afford. We can maybe try and raise grant money for it, but right now, there's far too many other things that we need to raise money for. You know, as like I say, as far as the pavilion coming up, like I say, it's the first I've heard of it. You know, if it's an illegal structure, they shouldn't be there, we'll take it down, you know? We're not about annoying people or, you know, it's about providing open space for people.
It's not an illegal structure.
Well, I.
It has, there's a permit for it. Now, I don't know the details of where it's supposed to be, I don't know that, but there is a permit for the pavilion.
Well, see, I wasn't around when it was built, and like I say, first I've heard of it, so it's either illegal or it's not illegal. It might have a permit for it, but if it's in the wrong spot.
That I don't know.
That permit's not voiding, as far as I'm concerned, it's illegal because it's in the wrong spot.
I don't know that either.
Now, that is not really, as far as I'm concerned, the land conservancy's fault, because if there's a building inspector and he says, this is fine here.
We don't know that.
Should we be held to task on that? Because as far as I'm concerned, you know, we don't have that sort of resource in our own organization. So we will look into it.
You do.
And, you know, if it's something that is the problem, then we're about dealing with it, you know? It's not about ignoring it.
Do you know our building inspector and how to get in touch with him?
I don't know him personally, but I'm sure.
Just call him, the township office, and you'll be able to hook it right into him. Good.
Tony, would you stick around, because I'd like to talk to you after the meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we've come to a conclusion on the solar gate request.
Well, wait, I wanted to say one more thing about the pavilion. I did look up the setbacks for that pavilion, and, because I believe it meets the setbacks, which is 50 feet in that district.
I just went through the building permit again, there's some other little things that.
Right, I don't know, that.
But the issue is, it's not an illegal structure, they call it a nonconforming structure. There's some method you go to to correct that.
Right, what I'm saying is, we'll have to have Rich look at the permit, because I didn't see anywhere on the permit where it was supposed to be placed. What I know is that I looked up what the setbacks were, and from what I understand, it meets the setbacks.
The property line setbacks.
Yeah.
But it says in the permit it's to be 350 feet from any existing structure.
Well, this is where I get confused, if it's supposed to be 350 feet from an existing structure, why was he given permission in the first place?
Well, we can't answer that because, to go back to 2007.
But, I mean, should the land conservancy be held to task on this?
No, the township approved that, but that's what we need to figure out, because from what I see from the regulations, it meets the regulations for setbacks, as far as where something can be placed. What he's referring to is on the permit, the zoning officer wrote that it's 350 feet from the nearest structure. That doesn't mean.
We don't know what it means.
We don't know what it means, it doesn't mean it has to be, because our zoning ordinance says it only has to be 50 feet from the property line, which it is.
Well, as I said, if it is an issue and if it is a problem, we are very willing to deal with it. But I will state, this is the first I've heard of this.
Okay, we don't, that's fine, okay.
So it's like I say, if we get the information together and, you know, we will deal with it. We're not about, you know, causing problems or, we're trying to supply healthy, open space to the public. That's what we're doing.
Well, I think it meets the setbacks.
We know that, we've talked about the setbacks. Is there anything else that needs to be discussed about this?
This is not here, I think I am fine discussing.
Let's go on to the next issue. Update Stevens Gardens.
Well, I wanted to bring up another issue. Some residents have brought it to our attention that there is something called Retro Tours off of Foxville Drive. It's a motorcycle tour company.
Where are they?
They're on Foxville Lane.
Bill Meyer's old house.
What did you say, John?
Bill Meyer's house.
We used to know the, it was on the credit commission, volunteer with that.
So we just learned of this recently. John mentioned it to me, and then a neighbor came in and mentioned it, and a neighbor feels that the supervisors have known about this forever, but this is the first we've, I know that I've never heard about.
I've never.
A motorcycle tour company. So we're gonna have Felix look at this to see if it's permitted, because there's, you can look on the website for this. And you can see what it is, and I guess everybody meets at this person's house, and then he has motorcycles you can rent, and then you go on a motorcycle tour.
It sounds like it's a business.
It sounds like that. So we're having Felix look into it, I just wanted you guys to be aware of it.
Thank you. I knew nothing about it.
In case somebody brings it up to you.
Okay, good.
The other thing is, I know I mentioned to the supervisors that last Tuesday night, it seems that somebody went into the maintenance garage.
Yes.
At first, we thought they used a key because that was the only way they could get in the building, but then we later noticed that they unscrewed the hinges off the building, and they.
They unscrewed the hatches.
And they put, then they screwed them back on after they were done, but what they did is they took all the barricades out of the building, the big sawhorse barricades, and they closed four roads. And they cut all the bays of stone that were in there. Then they also took a ladder and climbed into the pole war and took all the chains for the tractors. So it's very odd, especially since they put the hinges back on, which makes it, the only reason we noticed is because it was just off a little bit. So.
It sounds like his.
I think we thought so, but Albert, you?
I guess they would have to know if, that there's barricades in there.
You can spread any light that you can on this.
Albert was on vacation.
We're looking into this because it wasn't the main going where the equipment's kept that far.
Right.
It was just a shed where we keep barricades. Somebody would have to know those barricades were in there. Somebody would have to have the ability to take them off, you'd have to be able to transport the barricades, and there's a lot of other little different issues that seem to be adding up.
Pretty busy stuff.
It is a little different.
Granite Ridge, as you know, up on McFarland Road, the development up there is.
Let me interrupt you for a second on the same theme. I noticed yesterday that Hillendale was blocked off for a while, was that properly blocked off?
Yes, that's us.
Okay.
Hillendale's gonna be paid this year and they're doing subsurface work.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, now you have to check. So Granite Ridge is moving along up there. We have had issues with stormwater control. If you notice, when you drive by Granite Ridge, they have big tubes that are the stormwater control, and those tubes are required by the conservation district. And unfortunately, during heavy storms, those tubes just lift up and everything runs under them. So we've had major problems with that. We recently got the contract to put in super silt fence in addition to tubes. There still is muddy water that will run, but the silt is being contained on the site now. And then, starting, I think, in a week, McFarland Road will be closed for about two weeks, for maybe five every day, but local traffic.
Between Hillendale and.
Excuse me, could you say again, I couldn't hear what you said.
In approximately a week, McFarland Road will be closed for two weeks.
What, the whole?
Between.
Between Rosedale and Hillendale.
What will be the detour, you got 4,000 cars that go?
They have, we have a detour that we're getting approved right now.
Are you?
Yeah, but I won't be affected, I can go down to Hillendale, right? It's gonna be up on top of the hill where it's.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be closed the whole distance, but local traffic will be able to get to their homes.
Okay.
So the detours will be posted, we'll post them online as well. I don't know the approved detour yet.
And what is the construction they're gonna be doing?
Widening.
Okay.
They have to do the entrance lanes.
You don't wanna consider notifying whoever you notify, like for traffic stations?
Oh, we always do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we always do that. Stevens Gardens, they finally are ready to have their demolition permit issued for the greenhouse that burnt down. We have one outstanding issue because they don't agree with paying our engineering review fees, so we're trying to get that resolved. But once their demolition permit will be issued, then we're pretty close for them to have everything completed to issue a temporary CNO out there for the gardens.
How much are the engineering fees and what?
$3,000.
You're gonna split it that?
Yes.
Okay.
Penn's Manor Development is moving along, they're getting ready, they've already started the widening of the back entrances on Pemberton. They're gonna be putting the curb in soon, and then they should have the road prepared in the next couple of weeks for, next few weeks for paving. But that project is moving along, we're good.
Okay, now we have puppet.
Wait, I'm not, I'm not.
I don't see any others.
I have more. I sent supervisors an ordinance from Kennet Borough regarding parking on lawns, that a resident, and actually HOA president, did I cover that? Just today. Or yesterday, actually. A resident brought it up because their neighbors park on their lawns a lot, and they noticed that the borough adopted an ordinance prohibiting parking on lawns. So they asked if the supervisors would consider an ordinance like this. So you guys can look it over, I talked to Bob Adams about this ordinance, and just as I thought, he doesn't think it's appropriate in a township. I can see in the borough, which is a different story, but.
I was, I asked a question, whether there's a homeowners association, whether that homeowners association has addressed this question. And I don't know, there is a homeowners association, I now understand. Whether it's been addressed at that level, I still don't know. But it would seem to me that there's enough disparity amongst the different kinds of properties that are within the township, there would be, it would have to be a very artfully drafted ordinance so that somebody who lived on an agricultural piece and is used to driving on an unpaved lane that feeds into lawns, whether that person should be prevented from being able to park on his or her lawn. Whereas if you're in a development like Ashford, where it's more of a residential area, I can see why it might be more appropriate there. But I think that becomes a call for the organization that oversees the particular area of question, rather than making it a broad brush that covers the whole township. So I'm in agreement with Bob Adams, I think this would be a complex thing for us to do on a township-wide basis.
And I suggested to the lady, she is the president of the HOA, and I suggested to her that they look at adding that regulation for their development, because the road that the person lives on is private road that the HOA owns.
So that could be even more difficult.
I think anything that's come in open space belongs to the homeowner association for their purview and regulation. Let them worry about it. If they don't do it, they're open to whatever happens. Certainly, parking on private property is at the discretion of the property owner, and that's certainly the way it should be. I don't see that we in the township have any really role in this unless it's on preserved, conserved land, and that would have to be done through the conservation agreement. And I don't know that we need to, that covers all the land, I think, in the township, doesn't it?
I sent you guys an email about Longwood Fire Company's proposal for an engine truck next year. Have you guys thought about that anymore?
And no, I haven't.
So Longwood Fire Company is looking to buy two new trucks. One of them, they will get a grant for, the other one, they're asking the supervisors to pay for over a long-term lease. And the truck is $650,000, it's an engine truck.
These are my first response, first blush at that subject, concerns the contribution from other townships that are served by Longwood Fire. And I haven't seen anything to support or to, I'll sage my concern about that subject. Do you feel, was there anything in their proposal? Because Longwood Fire Company serves some of East Marlborough, I believe some of Bensbury, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe other. And I would think that they should be asked to contribute something as well.
They are, on the one truck that they're getting, which is about $850,000, they're getting $400,000 in a grant, and they're asking the other townships to contribute the rest, except for Kennet Township.
All right.
This engine truck, they're asking specifically for Kennet Township to pay.
Over the life of the lease or the payment, what are the annual payments?
They said that can be determined, if they haven't come up with anything, they just wanted to know if the supervisor people would be willing to entertain that idea.
Why did they make the distinction that it's only for Kennet Township to be involved for this one particular vehicle, as opposed to Mike's question of, if it's good for us, it's good for everybody?
I think that they felt that, since they were asking the other townships to pay for half of the other truck, that they wouldn't be able to contribute to this truck, is what I gathered.
Run the numbers again for me. This truck that they're asking us to pay for the amortization lease of it, the principal cost is $600,000?
$650,000.
$650,000. And we would be essential, essentially paying that total amount of interest over time.
Correct.
And the other truck is costing some 800.
850.
And they're getting a grant for half of it and asking the other townships to pay half. And they're getting a grant for half of it, and asking the other townships to pay half of it. So, the other townships, and I don't know how many there are, be responsible for something in the order of $400,000.
Is it, Albert, is it three others that they serve, or?
I'm not sure either, but that's Pensbury, East Marlborough, Copson.
So, that's four, total.
So, four townships are being asked to, in some fashion, pony up approximately another $400,000.
Three townships are.
Three townships. So, that's $100,000, nominally rounded off to as much as, but not quite $150,000 each. That seems to be a bit unfair. Just a sec.
I think you need to talk to Longwood, because what they're probably doing is, you're going on assessed value, or something like that. Okay, you should know.
John?
I saw a little news show the other day on fire companies that were run by private, for-profit operations. And apparently, it's like half of the country's covered that way, surprisingly. But the one key thing, the head of the fire chief, the private employer, pointed out that they buy fire trucks that cost one-half of what is normally paid for a fire truck. And I have a lot of respect for Longwood and all these fire companies. But these are Cadillacs, in my opinion. I would, I think it's worth asking the question, at least. Do we need to spend $850,000? Maybe if that's a ladder truck, that makes sense, but I don't know the answer to that, but there's a huge discrepancy.
I got it.
Go ahead.
Obviously, I have two things now, one has just been brought up. This might be an ideal exercise for the Business Advisory Committee, because they would probe into it, to what John's talking about, to the balance of fairness. And they would be able to make a recommendation based on that, and take some of the, you know, details out of what you personally might want to go through. Have it reported to you versus having to dig it up yourself. That's your privy, my suggestion. My other thing, though, before we run out of time, back to McFarland Road quickly, is that we recommend, you've probably thought about this here, but just to make sure, at the five-point intersection northbound, particularly northbound, I would post a sign saying, "McFarland Road closed, Cypress Street detour." Because half the vehicles turn right, and then go up McFarland to avoid the borough. And that's just a suggestion. I know it drives all that traffic into the borough, but I don't know what other reasonable route you'd have, because if you take them up Bayard, they're going to have a hard time. I mean, that's, Bayard does go left, so that would work too. But then you get all that traffic by silos and going around that corner, that might not be a good route.
I can tell you where they're going, I just pulled it up. This is the proposed detour. So, if you're on Rosedale, you would go down Rosedale to South Walnut, to Creek Road, back to Hillendale, and back around, if you're coming from Hillendale. That's the proposed route.
Before you-
But it hasn't been rejected.
It's a good idea, but before you go into fire company issue-
I want to go into that too, after you, Albert.
I would be very careful what you do there about the Cadillac versus the Chevy.
Me too.
Because that Cadillac is their pack. Firemen now give an awful lot of time, there's training once a week, you have to be certified to be a volunteer fireman.
Training.
You know, so the idea of flipping hamburgers by fire trucks, I'm going to help, and that's their pack, that's their pride and joy. They take that other place, and they show, "Hey, this is ours." That's their adrenaline pop. I'd be very careful how you... Firemen, as you notice, have lost $20,000 in the last 10 years. So, it's a very sensitive issue for you, and I want to pay for it.
Okay, we have only a few more minutes.
I want to comment on the fire truck as well.
Go ahead, do that, and you'll be probably the last.
A year or so ago, Jim, you may remember this, Jim Guthrie, at the Regional Planning Commission, the fire company came in and made a very detailed and involved explanation of its long-term plans and financial needs. I still have a copy of their proposal. I think they came into the township thereafter and did the same thing. I would like to have them come back, and I want to go back and look at that booklet that they gave me. And I'd like to have them come in and talk to us about their specific plans, so that the questions that have come up from this table and from in front can be addressed. And I'd like to understand it better.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've all heard in the news that Detroit is going bankrupt. We've heard in other major cities that are cutting back the number of fire departments or stations they have, it's very likely that there's a large amount of equipment out there that may be offered for sale, but only the kind of equipment that our fire company would find acceptable. I mean, I don't mean the junkiest piece of equipment, not even thinking of a Chevrolet or a Cadillac, but if they, there's no doubt is, or going to be, a lot of equipment on a used market that's available for this. And there might be some very good pieces out there that we may be able to pick up.
It's a reasonable question.
It's a question in a way, rather than going to buy new in a market like this.
What was the hurricane that came ashore and kind of devastated New Orleans a number of years ago? What was it? Katrina. There was a human cry, a plea around the country for such things as rescue equipment to be given, and fire equipment, and so forth and so on. And I understand fire companies, rescue companies, ambulances around the country unloaded their trash. Okay? Anybody else have a comment? And therefore, I move that we adjourn, and Scotter, I hope you say yes.